All right, my clock says one. So Ed, what do you think? Should we get this going?
Yeah, let's see. I mean, it's time, so if you've got people trying to get on there now, can you see?
Yeah, but there's still a few coming in. So I'm gonna, I don't wanna take up a bunch of time before we get into the agenda with introductions, but I do think we wanna, I wanna make sure we give Stephanie a chance to introduce herself because I think for most of the PLPW members, this will probably be the first time they've got a chance to interact with Stephanie. So Stephanie, thanks for turning on your video and surprise, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, thank you Greg. Hi, everybody. I'm Stephanie. I have had the opportunity to see many of your names and watch a few presentations from previous meetings that you have all attended and have really enjoyed just getting to know a little bit about what this council does. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you and if you have any questions or need anything, don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Thanks Stephanie. Can you remind, remind us your role?
Sure. I, my title is the Access and Landowner Relations Bureau Chief. So I'm working really closely with Jason Cool, who oversees all of our access programs. And I'm also working closely with Tom Lang. He's our Trail Stewardship, I think he's Trail Stewardship Manager, I believe, and also working with Seth MacArthur, who oversees all of our OHB programs and Shooting Grant Programs. And we're also in the process of hiring a Shooting Range Development Manager, while be working closely with that person to develop shooting and archery ranges throughout Montana.
Great. Thanks Stephanie.
You're welcome.
And then Director Worsak, I thank you for joining us. Before we jump into the agenda, is there, I wanna hand it over to you, see if there's anything you'd wanna add here?
No, Greg, I appreciate it, but I just, I just wanna listen and see what everybody's got, what they're saying and where we're going with this thing. And if you have any questions for me as we go along, I'm here to answer them. So yeah. I appreciate everybody tuning in that can, so I appreciate it.
Great. Well, so I thank you Hank, and just so you know, so we, is, is, most of you understand, we put that we noticed the public on this, and so we do have some attendees with us today that are watching on the Zoom link, but we didn't have anybody sign up for public comment, so, so that part of the agenda, we won't, we'll be able to kind of ignore, I guess, at this point. But, so let's get started and, and really, the, the purpose today is to just have a conversation about where we're at with the Hunter Landowner Stewardship Project, to look at the outline for the, the video and the course, which, which I'll explain a little bit as we get along. I don't want, that might be a little confusing, but I'll, I'll explain that here in a minute. One of the key pieces on that outline, I'd like to get some input on from folks on the call here, both members and staff, is our key takeaways. We'll look at the draft exam and, you know, answer questions and take any input we can on that. And then look at the project timeline and rollout and there's, you know, some, some probably more discussion than what we can get to today on that, but at least maybe tee up a few topics that might show up again on the next PLPW meeting. So that's kind of the overview. Any questions on that before we get into the topics? Okay. Well, the first, first topic is gonna be the course video outline and the reason why I, I feel like it might be a little confusing is is we're, we're, it's kinda scant, kinda scant, I think, on details at this point, and it's a little bit intentional. We're, we're hoping to use this outline as kind of the basis for a script for what would be a video that would sort of be the core of our program. So the current program is pretty heavily text-based, takes, you know, I, we, we cut and pasted all the text off of that program, and I think it's a little over 20,000 words, which, you know, there's some really good books out there that are shorter than 20,000 words. So it's pretty text-heavy. What, what I'm looking to do is transition to something that's almost completely video. So, so the idea would be as a student would watch a video, maybe a suite of videos, and then take an exam. And so this outline would be sort of the framework around what a script, video script would, would be. But I wanna focus on, I, it says in the, the draft outline, three key takeaways, there's four. And the acronym is, is convenient, acronyms are handy for remembering, and that's T R E C, Think, Respect, Expectations, and Communication. And so what I'm hoping to do, hoping what we, what we'll have is, is some, some feedback on those takeaways, feedback on the sort of the general broad framework and the points of the outline, so that we know if we're on the right track or if we need to make some course adjustments. So that, that's, that's the outline kind of in a nutshell. Any, any thoughts on that? Any questions on that before we get into any feedback?
Oh Greg, just looking at that in the order that it's presented, to me, I get the four takeaways there. We've all discussed those. But going back to the beginning of at least PLPW's concern and input is is the fact that people haven't really taken the Hunter Landowner Stewardship Program to any great degree. Over the course of the years, it's been available when you looked at how many people participated. And while that's true, we've also had plenty of input from landowners over time about those impacts and concerns that they have. So I guess, to me, it's all relational and understanding to communicate that this relationship between hunters and the landowner and the land and the game, all the resources, is really the big focus. And then how we, how we get everybody involved with it, as much of our, as much as our capability allows. So in my view, the relational aspect is the that we can create a really solid understanding about how that's all connected together. We don't have good wildlife management or hunting opportunity or recreation opportunity without the best relationships, and we've had good ones. But today has brought different issues into the picture than in the past.
So Ed, are you thinking that be, that's one of the, that should be one of the takeaways, maybe like a fifth? Or are you thinking that that would be somewhere else in, in the program, that emphasis on the relationship?
Well, I think the relationship, from my experience in the council and as a hunter, the relationship is primary. And having that understanding, all these things about thinking about what you're doing, respecting it all, the expectations and the communication, that all falls under that relationship. And at least from PLPW's experience and charge, we are charged with engaging and commenting and recommending on the status of relationships between these two parties plus out those. That's our charge. So I think that we've talked about this for a long time. And bringing it to the head, I, you know, it's gonna take some time. I don't think it's gonna happen overnight, but yeah, I think relational aspect is kind of, to me, the stem on the umbrella to put these things in place and how they create a great relationship going forward.
So, so maybe we emphasize that relationship piece in sort of the why, the why take the test. I mean, maybe we can, maybe we can work on some language that really nails that down and that becomes, that becomes sort of the, the, the stem of the umbrella, so to speak, and, and whatever we do with takeaways sort of builds on that ultimate kind of goal or, or why. Does that, does that sound kind of in line with what you're thinking?
Sure.
Okay.
How about any of your other PLPW folks, do you have a chime in on that?
I think it's a good way to start in there. I mean, if you, if you bring up relationship, I think the thing that needs to be in there, respect and communication. So I mean, I think to, to engage in the relationship, it takes these four items to, to make this all work. I mean, if you look up the definition of relationship, I, you know, for sure it covers the way two groups handle each other. So I agree.
Hey Greg, I have a question.
Sure.
So I think everybody's done a lot of great work on this, and it's been an issue that we've, we've talked about for many years when I was working with PLPW too. And is trying to get the right audience to get this, because the people that really need it the most are the ones that are not gonna take it, no matter what, how we incentivize and do these things like this. So a question I have, is this something that could be added? This would be more for Wade too. Is this something that could be added right now to our current hunter education instruction? Something that would be, and so everybody that goes to the course takes, has to take this. And then look at a way to incentivize individuals that haven't taken it or haven't had to take this, to get them to do it, because we have to figure out some way to get the right, try to get the people to take it, because it's been dismal at best. I took it a long time ago. I think it's a great deal. And I think shortening it makes a lot of sense, but how do we make it worthwhile for people? And, and, and once again, target the right people.
So Hank, to the, to the Hunter Ed point, landowner relations are a topic that gets covered in both our Hunter and Bow Hunter classes. And, and most of our field days that have a a landowner station where students go out and practice and ask, excuse me, ask permission and so forth. Can, can we incorporate an additional video into the online course? Certainly. Anything's, given enough time and money, anything's possible, right? Greg and I talked about that a little bit this morning. The, the online course, put a video in there, needs to be short and sweet to fit in with their, their parameters, two, three minutes, or maybe a couple of two or three minute pieces to, to work in there. And somebody made the comment about the people that need to see this or the ones that, that don't. And I guess, so I see Ron's on here. I, I suspect that most of our problems are with our adults, not, not our kids.
Right.
And I was, I was thinking about this earlier, you know, bear cubs aren't, aren't born mischievous. They're taught that by their parents. And I, so I kind of make the analogy there, which brings me, I think, all of us to the question, how do we get those parents involved and, and to, you know, get them educated? And I, I think that's the, that's the big nut that we're, we're all here to try to crack. Is that, everybody's agreeing on that?
Well, it's one nut. It's the, the, I think that's gonna be, that, that will certainly circle back to that subject later in the agenda, but that's certainly, certainly one of the things we're trying to particularly, you know, I'm talking about that, the, 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 it sounds like it's a bigger conversation that the council's gonna have to as well, is, is how to get people to take it.
Everett, do you have your hands up there?
Yeah, thanks Ed. And I missed the intro, so my apologies if I'm kind of speaking out of turn on this, but kind of going off of what you did say, Ed. I, I feel like it's a good idea that we revamp the program, update it, and, and do some work to it. So I'm really glad that we are. But I also feel like there, there really isn't any incentive for somebody to take this even when it's been updated. And so I feel like we have to have some sort of carrot slash stick approach to getting people to take it. And I know one of the ideas that we've talked about is before you can go into a block management area, you would have to have a certificate that you've taken a program like this or this for particular program. And I, I think that might be outside of our scope, but it's certainly one of my thoughts and I think a feeling within. Well, I'll just speak for myself that unless there is some sort of carrot there to bring people to the table, it, it's not gonna have a wide audience, and a wide audience is what we need for people to, to, to find some kind of accomplishment in, in having statewide hunter behavior change. And, and I think so, so again, I, I think that, I don't wanna sound overly critical, but I, I feel like we were moving in the direct, right direction, but we, we should examine some way to find incentive-based, if possible, to get people to take it. And I think requiring it to, to participate in block management as a hunter is a good direction.
Thanks Everett. Hank, you got your hand back up.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with whatever saying. We, we need to find some type of incentive to get the other people to take it. To me, I look at this as a two-pronged approach. One is to get it in with the kids that are taking it now and, and drive that point home. And then secondly, to look for the adults and the other thing we need to do, the ones that really need the help on this thing. And I know the, the Master Hunter Program and other ones that have kind of mirrored this and got some ideas and getting people some additional ability to get on there. I mean, the case in point, I've asked Wade to work on just a simple thing of getting kids to come, an incentive to have them come into the in-person you know, field courses, and we're still working on that, so to incentivize people. But anything we would do, you know, I, I mean, I talked to Ed about maybe possibility of looking at, you get a bonus point for completing it. You get something like that, that would be an incentive to go in, in, into this and give them a little bit for doing it for participation. That would require legislation and, and look at that and those type of things. But the same would happen, would have to happen with block management. If we try to restrict block management, that you had to have this course. You know, from my perspective, I think reward is one thing, but the also, I don't know if you guys have talked about looking at increasing penalties for misbehavior on block management and different things like that. You know, it's kind of a double-edged sword on this. You need to reward and punish. Reward good behavior, punish bad behavior. But that's up for the, that's for the council to come up with.
Yeah. So Ed, we've, we're, we jumped into a, a topic on incentives, which is, I'm, I, I like this conversation. I'm happy to keep, keep going here. Do we want to do that or do we, do we wanna keep talking about this? And if so, I'm gonna kind of let you drive the bus a bit, or do we wanna talk, get into the program specifics? I can go either way.
Thanks for that Greg. So to me, when I, excuse me, read through the outline and, and the exam outline potential, to me, it goes back to what are we trying to accomplish and how? And so the first, what's the first goal here? And I, I think whatever brought up and, and we've talked about quite a bit in the past, are we gonna create, so the stewardship program exists, it's just not being taken to any great degree. So are we gonna create a new program and then incentivize it? As Everett mentioned and the director spoke about, or are we gonna go towards a requirement? And to me, that's been the question that has to be asked and answered before we really know how the program should be designed. There's a lot of educational components that already exist in hunter education, both on the bow and the rifle side. And those still have to stand either way. To me, this is a little bit different going forward, because it's addressing specifically, you know, that hunter relationship with a landowner on the ground. And it, it's derived out of opportunity and access. So it seems to me that we've gotta come to an understanding how we're gonna proceed with that, Greg. And as we've talked about it, I begin to think that maybe we need a a tiered approach, you know, we and we come in with one that is incentivized and it eventually becomes a requirement. So in the beginning, we incentivize it. In the end, it becomes required at some point. You know, whether that's three years down the road or whatever. To me, it's the bigger picture of creating the best relationships we can create in the future for all the parties. So I guess my, my concern is if we don't know where we're going with it, it's hard to fill in the blanks of what the program should be, both on the question, both on the video that's informing, and then the questions that we want answers to drive home the understanding on this issue.
So, so you're sort of, you're, you're sort of saying that the, the, the content of the video or the content of the program, maybe even the, the level of detail we get into or the breadth of the program might depend on how it gets, might depend on how we're going to use it. So, so for instance, if it's, if we don't do anything as far as incentives, if it's just there for people to take if they want to, maybe the content and how we phrase the content isn't as critical as if it's in a required program and, and people have to take it. Is that, am I catching that right?
Not really for me. I think the content is critical either way. That's why we are where we are. The content may be a little different, you know, like I can tell you, I mean, the things that you've begun here are all of importance. And we've had these discussions about each of these particular issues. We, in this outline that I've seen, you know, we don't even talk about trespass and clearly trespass is the number one concern and frustration for landowners. The others follow suit, you know, whether it's weeds or fences, gates, garbage, et cetera, roads. They're all concerned. So I think that the content is gonna be pretty similar, but how we pose it. If it's an exam that's required, that's a little more serious to me. If it's informative and you know, voluntary, but incentivized, it might be a little different. And I think there you get into enforcement and et cetera, you know, what do we wanna do?
Any other?
Also on PLPW on that particular issue. Drew, are you in there?
I'm here. I'm here Ed, and, and what you're saying about putting the cart in front of the horse, I would agree with.
What do you think?
I think all sorts of things, but I'm, I'm in listening mode. I'm with Hank right now.
Okay. Anybody else?
So what do, are we, are we, how do people feel about the, I mean, I I know, I've heard, I've listened to you guys wrestle with the, the question of requiring this and how to require it and the, in the incentives at a couple of meetings. Do, do we want, I mean, is, it seems like that's sort of, that's kind of a topic for an official meeting, not really a, a work session here, but do we wanna get into, you know, some feedback on the on the outline specifically or on the test specifically? Would that be an appropriate next topic? Or do we wanna talk some more about incentive ideas?
Any input?
Drew?
Yeah, raise my hand. Look at that. I, I guess I would, so, good question Greg. I would, I would direct the question to Hank and I would, one of the things I brought up in the meeting, the PLPW meeting a couple of times now is I absolutely think that we should make these mandatory. I think giving 11, 12, 13, 14-year-old kids training and then expecting them not to ever make a mistake again is well, it's, we're just setting them up for failure. But one of the things that I was told is that from the director, that we don't want to make anything else required. So I guess, I, I would ask, Hank, I would ask you, I mean, is that completely off the table or, or is that an option? Making, making additional trainings mandatory as we progress through life.
So describe what you're, I mean, I understand the premise of what you're trying to say, but basically, so anybody that hasn't taken it as a, as a, in the hunter education course and then is required to take it on, online or whatever, take it up, you know, the course online to order to hold license or what?
Well, e- essentially continued education. So if I think of, you know, of an insurance salesman, for example, they have to go through annual or biannual updates, and that's based on not, not giant, huge swaths of topics. Typically, that's on individual things that are either really current or a hot topic. So I think if we had a, a list of citation yearly and you could look at it and go, all right, well, in 2019, X, Y, and Z were our top three citation issues, let's make one or two videos that hyper-focus on that issue. And for the 2023 season, it's mandatory for everybody applying for a license to watch one five to 10-minute video on one specific topic.
Yeah. My initial gut feeling to that is I think it looks good on paper, but the reality of getting it done. So you look at, so you're talking resident and non-resident.
Talking to everybody. If you wanna, if you wanna play in Montana, here's a five-minute video similar to what we're doing with, with other hunting scenarios, right? Like if you wanna hunt bears, you have to take a test, correct? So I, I guess I don't see why implementation for this would be much different.
No, it's just the, the point of mandatory to go hunting at all. I think it's become, becomes an issue, and it does with me. I'll be brutally honest with you. I think anytime you try to force the public to do something, you're gonna run into, run into issues with it.
But don't we already forced the public to take a hunter education program for a week or two weeks, however long it takes?
Yeah, and this would all require legislation. I'm just telling you, you asked me my opinion, I'm giving it to you. Where I think it would come from, you're absolutely right. All these things can happen. It would require legislation. Once again, I'm, I'm looking for the, try to get the incentive-based part of this thing to get it done and and make it worthwhile for people to do it, because I think when you force it, you're gonna, you're gonna have people that will they're not even, I mean, they'll figure out a way to work around it, get the test done, have somebody else take the test, or whatever you need to do to get this thing done. But it creates a whole bunch of hurdles for licensure, especially if you're talking once a year to get this thing done. Hell, we can't get people to put in on a timely manner, we had to notify a year ahead of time when they have to apply by. They still miss deadlines. So imagine adding that to it, that you have to verify this, have the class taken and this done. I just think logistics of it would kill us doing that.
Yeah, and then, and I agree that there's some difficulty behind it. I guess the incentive is, is this hunt. If, if you wanna hunt, I mean, that's a pretty big incentive for most folks. And not being, and losing that privilege would probably incentivize them to take that. So I, I don't disagree that, that there obviously are operational logistical things to, to do there, but you know, when I look at the big picture, when I look at every one of these PLPW meetings, every, every meeting we've had, all I've heard repeatedly, over and over and over, is that there's too much Is that there's too much trespassing, there's too much poaching, there's too much bad behavior. And I'm, I'm just here hoping that we can try and curb that and, and build that relationship.
So he had the edge of that, Drew, that's a really good point. And what, what the problem is, I've heard it forever too. All these things are too much of this, that. The whole, when you look at the whole grand scheme of thing. Is we can raise, we can raise fees for different things. The problem is, will they get prosecuted? You know, all this stuff comes into play and as the, the state is changing and you get different. Prosecution, you look at trespass, you look at things like that, is it something that a county attorney is going to even want to bring or go up against? I mean, all these come into issue, so we can raise those and try to get that, that problem squared away. It just comes into other obstacles that we run into doing that. And I mean, and, and Ron Howell could speak to that, uh, from on the ground on this thing. But it's, those are, those are things I think when you look at, everybody wants to fix it. I don't think it's an easy solution. And to me, forcing is not a good way to do it, incentivizing is. Uh, but one, once again, that's just me. On the old school that if you. Ask me to do something for you, I'll move a mountain. If you tell me to do it, I'll tell you to pack sand. And I think that's, that's what happens. So you look at this, the other thing, believe it or not, is, you know, seventy-three percent of our. Our revenue comes in from non-residents. Just like it, we started getting them where they decide they don't want to come to Montana because it's too much of a hassle. All of a sudden, our license fee goes up drastically. All that comes into play. It's all very delicate, very balanced.
Donna, you've got your hand up.
Hang on just one, one second, Donna. Dale Trudy's been trying to get in there. Can you get in, Dale?
I don't see Dale's name.
I don't, I don't either.
Should I promote Dale to be in a panelist?
Yeah, you should be.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll tie it.
Where some other folks are, because I don't.
Yeah, I missed quite a few. Come on, Greg.
Hey Dale, can you get on there? Can you get on now, Dale?
I think I'm on.
All right, well, thank you. Um, I, I think we're in the stage right now that, um. I, I think by just jumping to going mandatory, it's going to slow up our process. And the fact that if we ever did that, we would have to look at a very, very large pri- pitcher. And the, the public outcry and what would the department's reputation? How people would react to that scares the heck out of me. I think we'd get a lot of bad publicity by making this mandatory. And you think my eighty-eight year old father would take that test? He'll just go poach a freaking out before he takes that test. Yeah, so. Anyway, and then I'm going to be stuck having him a, a father-daughter talk, so I would not be pro- pro- proponent of mandatory.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, Dale.
You know, I listened to a lot of the, I've listened to the discussion, sorry, I, I wasn't on earlier, but. As I read through the material and, and this topic has been discussed at PLPW now for, for a few years and. I guess the big concern I have is, I think the product that Greg and his people have put out is, you know, it. Is good, however, it's, it's been, um, alluded to several times already today that. What's our audience and, and the audience that needs to be a part of this? If you just say, take it if you feel like it, they're not going to, they're not going to take it. And so there's got to be some incentive or mandate to take them and. And certainly understand what Donna said about, boy, your, your. Elderly father is not going to want to jump on and take this, but there's, there's got to be some way that. People need to hear this message and, and it needs to be repeated. I mean, taking a five minute video. And answering a test and do that one time and say you're good. What, I, and maybe just take a little step backwards. One of the things we had talked about before. At past PLPW meetings was before you can. Get a conservation license, you have to listen to a video. And there could be a series of videos that Fish Wildlife and Parks put out that touch on many of the subjects that. That Greg have in the outline and. I still think without being totally heavy-handed and not something that's going to be really. Over the top in terms of time, having a requirement where somebody has to listen to some of those things. Is going to help us get to where we need to go. I'm not sure we're going to get there, but I, I think it might help us. Thanks.
Thanks, Dale, Everett.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we're not. That we, we can't be afraid of the hurdles or the opposition that might come into place when we start to put in a program. That has a requirement or a mandate to it. I think if we don't do anything. We're not going to move the needle and, and as Dale just said, the people that need it, they're not going to do it anyway. And so. The current trajectory that we have is landowners locking out hunters because of hunter behavior. And, and I think they're justified in that. But I also think that the non-hunting public, they're not seeing. The good hunter behavior, they're seeing the reports, like things that happened in White Sulfur Springs two years ago. And, and they're forming opinions based on that. And so there really needs to be some element. Of self-policing within the hunting community on, on, um, a, a program like this and. The, what it would take either legislative or administrative from the department, I, I think there's something worthwhile they're investigating and. If it requires a, a, a new working group or PLPW, putting this to the top and actually hammering out some details to it. I think it's something that the longer we, we sleep on it or, or continue to say. It, it, it's just too big of, of a piece of pie to eat, then we're, we're going to have. We're going to have the same results. And so my encouragement is, is that we begin. To, to look towards a program that we can implement. And mandate, whether that's legislative or administrative, whatever requires. And, and lead, um, through this towards. A solution. And, and so I really think that we, we can't be afraid of, of what it might take or the resistance that there might be. I think that's what I want to say on that.
Thanks, Everett.
Hank.
Yeah, real quick, I, I appreciate that, Everett. And one of the things you made me think of when you said that is. I've been dealing with this for a long time, with this whole sportsman's group. I mean, there's things and. One thing I'm not seeing, and you guys are members of sportsman group, is you said to police our own ranks. And I don't know of a sportsman's group, I don't know what they say about landowner relations and sporting relations. Do they do it? Why all of a sudden are we carrying the water for everybody? And why don't we have the Montana Wildlife Federation, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers? Why do they not have a program that does this stuff as well for their membership? I, I don't know if they do. I'm just asking the question for, I guess, both Dale and Everett. Uh, on this thing, are you aware of anything where they do? Some kind of press, some kind of releases to your membership saying. You know, this is an issue we're hearing, we need to police our own ranks and take care of it. I mean, I think it's a, to rely on just the PLPW to. To fix this and then get the benefit of reward from it. And to your, your point, Everett, about. Yes, going forward to this, we have to do something. Well, when it's all said and done, none of your names will be in the paper, mine will be. And that's, that's the bottom line on this. No matter what happens on this, it'll be, I did this, one way or the other. Um, and I, I, I'm, I'm in support of a hundred percent on, I'm moving forward on this thing, but. I think we need to get more groups involved as well too. And I don't want to confuse the issue, which I'm doing, but I'd like to hear from both Dale and Everett on that.
Well, I, I, I think groups that I'm a part of, it's spoken of internally for sure. I don't think there's something formalized. That, that talks about landowner hunter relationships, but I think that. There is a growing consensus that, um. That something needs to be done and, and the metaphor used is, you know, don't shoot holes in, in the boat that you're in, right? But I think sometimes some people need to be thrown overboard and they don't need to be in the boat at all. And. And, and that bad hunter behavior, I, I think is addressed, but those people. They're not in the, in the same groups or organizations that I'm in, right? So, uh, the way I think that this gets attacked is at a department-wide level, a statewide level, that. There is something that has teeth to it and, and block management seems to be the, the low hanging fruit as we think about this. A lot of people utilize it and it's a private land that's, that's utilized for hunting. And, and bad hunter behavior tends to be. Magnified on private land, right? It's seen more acutely and, and it's felt more. Uh, intensely by those owners. And so if we were able to put together a program that would make a required. Uh, make it required before you were utilize that, to me, that makes, that makes real good sense and it fits really nicely. I, I like what you're saying, Hank, though, that, that sportsman groups really should be more vocal about bu- bad hunter behavior. And I think there are some that are putting together programs. But they're all going to be within their own little spheres of influence. And so for us to have long-term. Landscape-wide impact, I think it's got to come from the department.
Good, Dale, and, and then I'll, I want to add something after Dale, uh. Chimes in, answers Hank's question.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, to answer Hank's question, I'm familiar with. The Montana Wildlife Federation, Back Hunters, Hunters, or Backcountry Hunters and Anglers. And Pheasants Forever, all within the last year, having. Um, pushes to get members out to assist landowners, um. I know Pheasants Forever had a project here where, um. A longtime landowner in, in Rosebud County had, was significantly impacted by a fire and they had a. Two-day work session where they helped him, um. Put up new fence and, uh, and that, that was Pheasants Forever. And I know back on. Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, I helped on a project a couple of years ago, and I've seen other projects from them, and I know the Wildlife Federation does that. They send out. Email messages to their membership saying, hey, come and help, but I'm not, I'm not aware of a real focus of any of those. Organizations, um. You know, that really addresses hunter behavior. I do agree. With Everett that probably Fish Wildlife and Parks. Needs to have leadership in it, but I would also say that it's everybody's responsibility to push the, push this message. And, uh. Maybe that's a message we take back to those organizations that say, you know. There needs to be more in your court. It can't be, it can't be just the very top down. It's, it's got to be all of us pushing for a common goal here of, of increasing or, or improving hunter, landowner relationships. Thanks.
I would, I would add one thing real quick. I hate to interrupt, and I'd add one thing, Dale, I really appreciate it. But I, I had thought before and I had talked about this, it's coming up with a slogan and I talked to Greg about it too. That we can share with all these organizations to include stock growers. You know, different, 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 you know, wool growers, different groups of people that are all in the same message. That we respect, you know, respect the hunt, respect the land, respect each other. Those type of things that a message that we come together on is, which is basically the premise of this landowner stewardship program, but. We, we all have something to gain by this, working together. And how do we come up with something like that? I know this gets off on a different topic, but it is still part of the same thing. But, you know, how do we get, and I really appreciate if you guys will reach out to these groups and say. Because I've, I've seen that what you're talking about, Dale, where, where they go out and help ranchers, they do things and they get, they get. Volunteers come forward and help them do things. I think that's amazing. And it gets a lot of credibility for the groups, but how do we also help them reach out to other people? That's just my two cents. I know, Ed, you're next.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
Okay, well, we, excuse me, we do have noted interest from those groups and. Um, you know, Marcus with MWF has been involved as Hunter Van Donzel has. So I know they want to be involved with it, but I think. It, it seems to me that the department has to take the lead on what the program is that we're offering, just like Hunter Education. And clearly. They'll be along to help from what they've stated recently. And I think Ron forwarded a, a statement from, uh. Montana Wildlife Federation, it's, uh, Hunter Landowner Advocate Program. And I, I did forward that, I think Greg has it and.
I haven't, I haven't too. It was, I thought it was great.
And then to Wade. You know, and so to me, that's circularly tying in. This effort, which is after Hunter Ed. You know, I mean, assuming we've got Hunter Ed going, which we do. Then this is that other gap. So I think if we have a good program to offer. It wasn't, I mean, this was brought to our attention recently by Hunter Van Donzel. And his desire to help promote and get the message out about the current landowner stewardship program. So I think there's interest. We, I don't think we have to entirely reinvent the wheel, we just have to connect the dots.
Yeah, yeah, and I just, and the only thing I would throw, I wanted to add is that. Tying a couple of things together and, and that. You know, we're, we're talking about kind of a, the challenge of changing behavior and, and the, the, the. Hunter Landowner Stewardship Project that we're talking about redoing is, is a tool in doing that. Another thing that we're doing and working with Marcus and Hunter and, uh, Stock Growers. Uh, we've got another meeting scheduled in the coming week, Ed, you're going to be there hopefully and. Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and, and, um, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers is, is to what you're talking about, Hank, is. Is some sort of a marketing campaign we can launch this year that. That really everybody can get behind, you know, what it says, I think is still part of the discussion, um. We talked about, uh, we've talked about respect and, and how to emphasize respect. Um, over, over the last couple of years of trying to. Trying to tweak the, that marketing campaign on hunter ethics, there's been. A lot of interest in keeping the message positive, um, not negative and that, that. There's still interest there, um. You know, uh, one, one avenue that would be more negative would say, hey. If you see some, if you're a, if you're a hunter and you see something, you need to say something, you know, protect access. You know, right now where we're seem to be kind of leaning to is more of the respect, you know, respect access, respect the hunt. Respect landowners. Um, but that conversation is happening and, and my, my goal is to. Is to get, eh, get our, these groups to a place where everybody can. Can get behind and promote that message that we're all one voice, um, out there this year in Montana saying. You know, here's, here's our, we're standing together on, on hunter ethics. So that, just an update, very, very much related, but not the same, same effort.
Yeah, thanks, Greg, for that. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this thread?
Well, if I kind of sum up where we just went. It appears that our best route is going to be to create. An incentive program around whatever. The, uh. The program's called. And I, you know, listening to the director. And, uh, I mean, we want some success. Everything is not broken. We just need to patch some problems and create some awareness. And I think we have to take that into account that there's a lot of good things going on and we just, you know. We need to show that and reemphasize how to do it well. Address the problems, you know, and as, uh, I think it was. Uh, Everett, you know, we probably do know, need to look at how we police with some teeth, you know. The director mentioned some of those things don't get prosecuted, so. You know, what's really the incentive to not do this stuff that's creating all the problem? And I don't know that we've addressed the consequences quite enough. Um, and somehow that almost has to come from hunters policing hunters because there aren't enough people in the field. To catch it and we've got to do it. So that might be part, a bigger part of the program is to emphasize that we need to police ourselves and do the right thing. I think we need to go towards, if everybody else is seen it the same way. When we get to August, having a, a clear direction. Um, towards an incentivized program that can be implemented. um readily. I I do think if we brought a requirement in front of a hunting license, it would never go anywhere when we try to get it through to the legislature. I just, I don't see it happening as much as I might think it should. Like Drew, you know, it's it's a privilege to hunt. So taking a little while to do it seems reasonable and and we should be wanting to do it, but I'd rather see us be successful in getting a good program out there, however we can do it. Sorry.
So Ed, um you know, uh, it sounds like maybe this isn't the time to go over the draft exam or, you know, spend much more time on the outline, uh, but we have on the agenda, project timeline. And it sounds like too, that maybe you you and I had visited about, you know, um, waiting to waiting to roll this out until the 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 Hunter Landowner Stewardship Project until next year after there's time to work through some of the incentives. Uh, is that what you're still thinking? Is that something you want to want to talk about? I mean, the the timeline is critical because it sort of you know, kind of limits our options or expands our options on how we get this done, depending on when we're going to launch it. So any thoughts on that?
I'm only one voice, so I think you know, we've got to have some discussion about that. Um, you know, how, assuming we have a program to bring forward, you know, then we, how do we incentivize it? And what is it required? What's required to uh implement that incentive?
Right. Or, you know, the flip side is how do we, how do we match the program to meet the incentives too? So you know, we could keep, we certainly are going to keep working on this. Uh, I mean, maybe maybe a thing to do is see where we land after the twenty, the meeting in August for the PLPW. And what I can do there is bring kind of, kind of where we've landed because by then we'll have a, we'll have some concrete messaging hammered out for this marketing campaign for this year uh with our partners. And maybe what I can do in August is is bring some of those uh, those pieces to the table and um, and who who's going to be partnering with us on that. Um, so so we'll at least at least know that there not, not just know that there's, there's nothing going to be done to address hunter ethics this year, but but know what we're going to be doing on the marketing side and then talk about what the plan moving forward might be with the project.
So you know, I guess with that, Greg, and and having looked through this outline on questions, what's the interconnectedness with Hunter Ed? Because to me, a lot of the questions, there are a number of them in Hunter Ed already that are very pertinent. So how do you interconnect that with the Hunter Ed side? Or continuity, um, realizing that Hunter Ed's required for new hunters, young hunters, and we're directing our target at current hunters. Still got to be the same message. And a lot of that is already in. You know, I I've taught Bowhunter Ed and there's a fairly significant part of landowner relations and how you behave. Me, I would think that has to work together.
Yeah, and I I agree with you and I, you know, I'll let Wade jump into it. Um, but I I mean, I think, I think we've got options. So um, I think we to I think some of what you're saying is align, make sure we're aligning the messaging and aligning, you know, the lesson uh, so that um you know, they're they're seamless, no matter whether you took Hunter's Ed last year, you took it you know, thirty five years ago. Um, but uh, so I think that's, I think that's important. And then I think to Hank's point in integrating it into the current program, I think we can, we can look at we can keep that and keep that as as an objective down the line as we uh develop this to figure out either either being able to pick up the Hunter Landowner Stewardship Project and insert it into our online Hunter Ed or to uh complete the liner Hunter Landowner Stewardship Project so that it's consistent with what we're teaching in Hunter Ed and then figure out how to sort of condense it into a meaningful piece. That's an additional part that goes into the online Hunter Ed. Of course, I think there's up there's some options there that 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 uh we certainly will keep in mind.
But do you want to vet some of those particulars with this group at this time or what? What do you want?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, this is sort of the um, just the kind of the only point of com- not confusion, but I think the only point that's up in the air right now is just sort of what what we we, my staff, uh, you know, working on this project, what we do next. Um, so do we wait uh and just just focus our efforts on the marketing piece? And wait for that August meeting to to get an indication of where PL, PLPW is going to come down in direction and then and then start to to angle the effort that way? Or do we keep pushing forward on this effort? Uh, you know, with, because of a video uh is going to take some time to produce um and write in those sorts of things. So I mean, I think, I think uh, is that kind of what you're asking? I see Hank wants to jump into. Um, so that that's maybe a question that's kind of lingering. I I got my own thoughts, but I'll let Hank come in.
Well, I think it's a good point, Greg, and I think it goes back to what we were discussing. If we incentivize this, I think it needs to be a good course and and you have to pay something to put in for it. If we're going to give, for example, a bonus point, or you have the ability to hunt on block manager, there's there's reward for doing this. So it's got to be more than a fifteen, you know, fifteen in the video. It's got to be a a decent course that you have to go through. So I think depending on what the group comes up, that will give you your direction in August on which way to go on this thing. Does that make sense to you, Ed?
It does to me.
That makes sense, Craig?
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of where I was at. I think we've, I think we've fleshed things out to the point where members, the council members know where we're at, know what we're thinking. Where we haven't spent a lot of time on getting feedback on on where we're at, but but that can come in the in the coming weeks and months. I mean, everybody knows how to get ahold of me and and Ed and Stephanie and and Hank. And so, you know, feedback on these questions, feedback on the outline. Um, you know, we can keep working on getting things in order for uh video production. Uh, you know, knowing that in the long run, that's ultimately, we're gonna have a, we're going to need to have some of that production accomplished. So we can keep kind of chipping away at some of the broader pieces that need to get into place and and then wait to see where we land in August on the finer details.
Yeah, I would hate to see you losing ground, you know, for what you established. And so then just to build on that going forward with that understanding, I think would be helpful for all of us. You know, and if it'd be helpful on your end, Greg, I would probably pull the council to forward maybe to me so I can, if they're repetitive, you know, put them together and then send them to you um, in regards to some of the key points that they've noted uh in regards to what we address in this course in the video. And we could do that in the in between uh time between now and August twenty fourth and just solicit that information and have it to begin with on top of what you've already started. Would that help?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great. Hank?
Yeah, one thing I'd add to that, Ed, is uh, when they bring these ideas to you, that they also look at what type of incentives we could do. You know, just throw some ideas out there and we'll see what we can actually get. We think we can get through the legislation, which ones we can't. I mean, I I don't know what it would be. I mean, it could be a whole bunch of different things. So
Oh, with how complicated is a super raffle tag champ?
A super raffle takes stamp?
Champ.
No chance, like a super tag.
Champ.
So I guess I I still don't understand the question. A stamp, is that what you're saying?
No, no, no.
No, a tag. So if you, if you took the test, you'd get entered into the super tag draw.
Yeah, that's not a problem. You know, that's what I'm saying, things like that, bonus points, things like that. We just, I don't know what the, what the um climate would be across the street on doing those things. That's, that's the thing we'd have to look at it. So I'd like to get some, some ideas that she could throw out there, some different ideas like, yeah, so a chance at a super tag, you know, whatever, things like that. Uh, a one time chance at it, you know, or a bonus point of your of your choosing, something like that, that we can look at, something that would be uh easy enough to administer and we can keep track of it. And and a hat too.
Cynthia.
I know this isn't um as far as the incentives are concerned, but I looked at your test. And although I like a written short answer, if you're going to have them take it online, that won't work.
Well, that's a, yeah, that's a good point. I think um we probably have to look at at uh the options of doing something hard copy too, I would imagine. We we just we aren't quite there to get uh away from that yet, but that, yeah, good point. Dale?
You there, Dale? You're muted.
Okay, how about now? Just kind of thinking a little bit about the August meeting and I've jotted down several notes today, but I heard Hank say, you know, that that we'll take this to the you know, PLPW and have them come back and hopefully, or maybe Greg said that that will have recommendations from us. I think it'd be very helpful um prior to the meeting to send whatever documents out to PLPW and and then have an idea of what kind of things you're looking for. So people can start hopefully putting some work into it beforehand, talking to some of their con- constituency. I mean, it it looks to me like about half of us are on on the call today. So we've heard the discussion. But just so we're all kind of thinking the same way, um, if we could have some of that stuff um, couple of weeks anyway, prior to the meeting, I think it would facilitate our discussion when we, when we hit the August meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Yeah, I'd say Stephanie, can you make sure that that goes out to the members? Whatever Ed wants to make sure we got out there.
We could do that.
Yeah.
You bet.
Okay, well, I think that kind of covers it. Is there uh more uh uh soil to till here or we we good?
Yeah, one thing if nobody else. I'm curious Wade, um kind of now that we've come through COVID and you're back in the traditional version of hunter education, kind of what's it looking like right now for participation? And then also how your instructor level is? And this goes to um Montana Wildlife Federation's um concept. So I'm kind of curious where you stand now, Wade.
Good question, Ed. Um, and coincidentally, I just happen to have some numbers here. So for fiscal year twenty two, which ran from June thirty till last week, we had uh four hundred and seventy eight active instructors in the in the classes that we put on. And by contrast, at the same period in fiscal year nineteen, eight hundred and seventy four. We're, we're down about a hundred and fifty on our average of instructors. So there've been been over a thousand ten fifty, eleven hundred for the last four or five years. We're down to close to nine hundred right now. As far as student participation goes, in the, in the last year, which is when we you know, year ago, June, really, is when we opened up for uh in-person classes. We've had thirty four hundred. Oh, sorry, that was males. We've had fifty two hundred. And I'm, I'm just rounding here, fifty two hundred people that have total that have taken the Hunter Bowhunter Classroom Courses. Uh, what that breaks it down to is forty six hundred have taken the the Hunter Ed course. Our, our largest demographic is the ten to fifteen year olds. That makes up eighty seven percent of our uh Hunter Ed classes. The the balance are taking the online course and for the same period, we've had sixty three hundred people take the online Hunter Ed. So that that brings our total up to about what, ten, ten thousand nine hundred ish? Uh, which is which is above average for the the fifteen years of Hunter Ed graduates by about about two thousand. So I I guess taking in into consideration, everybody, what everybody's talking about here with this PLPW and the um, the landowner sportsman relations. Uh, it it certainly appears like the online course would be a a good place to put some more content. Uh, the demographic, it's an older demographic that's taken it sixteen year olds and up. Um, these folks are able to hunt on their own. And they're, they're hopefully, they're just a little bit past that impressionable age of adults that are taking them out and teaching the cub bears bad habits. Does that, does that kind of answer your question, Ed?
Yeah, so um the ten thousand nine hundred, you said that's about two thousand above previous, so twenty percent?
Uh, yeah, we've saw the, hang on just a second, sorry. The the ten, twelve year average has been right around seventy two to seventy five hundred Hunter Ed students. Uh, and now here we are this year at at ten thousand nine hundred. How much of that is is attributed to the the convenience of the online course? Don't know. I I certainly assume certain amount of it. Um, how much of it is an influx of new residents? Certainly some. Yeah.
So have the field days that have been offered, have they been full or are they well participated in?
So and and just to to make a a clear distinction, the the in-person classes have included uh, you know, the the field day as part of their course.
Right.
Well, the 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 in-person classes that we've offered have been well attended. Both, you know, hell, all of our major cities, they've had full classes. So that's, that's been hugely positive. And again, that demographic has been the ten to fifteen year olds. We have, we have not. So I spent the 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 entire spring going around doing um instructor workshops around the state, all the regions. And had had spent a lot of time promoting the idea that as as instructors, they it'd be great if they would put on these standalone field days for the online graduates. Uh, one of the, one of the things that they've long complained about is that, you know, they they don't get to see these students. And and my my sales pitch, if you will, has been folks, here's, here's an opportunity to to see these folks, even if, even if it's for but a day. So you know, and and kind of pointed terms, put up or shut up. We we want, we as an agency and and certainly our director want to see these people um in front of you, our our experts and and folks learning. Uh, there's only been, I don't know, three or five of these field days offered thus far. And so so it's kind of a trying to get that that locomotive rolling. Uh, a little bit of spinning the wheels and it takes some time to get some traction. We've got a couple of these classes scheduled over in the Missoula area in the coming two months. So we're going to do some targeted advertising to those folks from uh, the list of the online graduates from from that area. They'll receive an email from us saying, hey, here, here's a link. Come to this class, sign up for it. That answer your question?
So on those online field days, is it the fact they don't? So on those online field days, is it the fact they don't have to take it or are we short of instructors?
So, of course, it's, it's, it's a voluntary thing for, for those students. And, and I'm having, I'm having difficulty getting our instructors um, enthused to do these. Um, and, and I, I try to talk and I've talked to him till I'm blue in the face that, you know, we're all here with the same goal and, and at, at the end of the day, and that's to put safe, ethical, responsible, legal hunters in the field. And here's an opportunity for them to contribute to that. And for whatever reason, like I said, we're just having a little bit of difficulty um, getting some traction.
Anybody else have questions on that?
I see the director in deep thought.
No, not deep thought, just thinking.
Well, obviously that'd be a concern for the issue we have at hand going forward, so. You know, we, yeah, so we gotta do a good job however we bring this out because it might be the main thing people get in the future. Yep. So, all I have, I, I think I'll send an email to the council members, um, to begin to send in your fine points, key points that you've collected over time in regards to this question for the landowner stewardship program. Our landowner stewardship program. And then if you have any particular needs um, for information from the department, please note those. Um, so we can get that information to you to help make those decisions at that point in August as best as we can.
That sounds good, Ed, and, and I would just, to, just to reiterate, I, I think, um, I think it would be good and, and I'll plan on it, you know, however the agenda sorts out. Um, but to be ready to present on the, on the, where we're at with the marketing piece there too. So we, so we know for certain we'll be doing that marketing push again this year and we'll have um, you know, folks, you know, partners that are on board with us um, helping to promote the message, you know, and we'll just have it more, more, a finer point put on that by the August meeting.
Okay. So, just gonna go around, if you have a final ask or comment um, from the council, so Dale, any final comment?
No, I, I, I think I'm good, um. I've jotted some notes down and, and I'll forward those to, to you and, and uh, Greg and a handful of others and just take those and maybe think about those and be part of the August uh, thought, thought package.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Any final?
Sorry, I didn't have my mute, I couldn't get it off. Um, no, I don't, I, I think it's been very interesting to listen to all the ideas and to help us start moving forward and, and um, to digest some of this before August. So I think, you know, I think we're on the right path, we wanna help educate and, and help. Um, but I think as a bigger picture, I think we need more law enforcement involved and one process leads to another, to another, and the more that we can connect those dots before we go public, the better opportunity we'll have with success.
Thanks, Donna. Uh, Drew?
I'm good, thanks Ed.
All right, thank you. How about Ray?
No, I, I don't know if you can hear me, my internet is, is uh, uh, terrible out here, so a lot of it was blurred. But uh, no, I do have a lot of thoughts for Au- August that I will be bringing.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Um, Drew, no, we did Drew, anybody I missed? Okay.
I don't have anything.
Oh, sorry, Timmy, you're right there above there.
You know, Ed, one thing I'd ask it is, is, is people think about this, just think about it realistically, how would you feel if I forced you to take this course before you get a license this year?
You want an answer now?
No. I know how I would feel, so.
Yeah.
All right, I, well, I think uh, I think we're set. I sure appreciate everybody willing to have the conversation and uh, yeah, this has been quite a helpful, uh, helpful conversation and thanks for being a part of it.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, everybody, have a, a great rest of your day, uh, Will. And if you have people that are interested and weren't able to attend, uh, we'll post this on our YouTube channel here in the next hour or so, so.
I see we missed that, Ed, you missed Everett to ask, ask him if he had anything else.
Oh, Everett?
No, you didn't miss me, I was quiet, I feel like I've said enough today and we'll have some more comments as we go through. I do just wanna say, I, I, I wanna encourage the department and, and Greg and Hank and everything you're doing and I know it can be thankless sometimes, but uh, it's really important work, so I, I just keep at it.
Well, likewise for you guys, I appreciate all your dedication on this thing as well, it's, it's uh, no picnic sometimes and I appreciate all, everything everybody's doing, so I think it's a good group, so thank you.
Haven't heard anything from Stephanie, I'm sure she got.
I'm just sitting here absorbing lots of great, you know, the commentary's really good, I'm learning a lot and um, I have a few ideas in my little mind here too that I'm looking forward just to talking over with staff and, and, and you um, when we meet in August. So thank you, everybody, for your input and, and thoughts to help guide us through this process.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
We done?
I think we're done.
Done.
Outstanding, thank you all, have a good one.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.